My name is Mayor Buddy Johnson, and I would like to call to order the Bellefonte Borough Council Meeting of Tuesday, January 3rd at 7:30 PM. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance, and we'll have a moment of silence for all of our family, loved ones, and community members who are no longer with us as we start the year 2023.
(inaudible)
Mr. Stewart, roll call, please.
Mr. Breckville.
Here.
Ms. Cleveland.
Here.
Ms. Dan.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Present.
Ms. McKean.
Here.
Ms. Burnell.
Here.
Ms. Sedgwick.
Here.
Ms. Tosti Basie.
She's coming on right now, Ralph.
And the worker is here, and Mayor Johnson.
Present. We will now have nominations and elections of officers. By agreement in early 2022, Borough Council officers agreed to rotate on an annual basis. Mr. Breckville will step down as council president. Mr. Doug Johnson will move from vice president to president. Mr. Bernier will move from pro temp to vice president. Is there a motion and second to approve this officer rotation as stated?
So moved, Breckville.
I'll second her, Cleveland.
Any questions on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
temp?
I would like to nominate Barbara Dan. I'd like to second that.
Nomination for Barbara Dan. Any other motions?
I'll call a question.
So we go to...
I'll take a vote for nominations if you want to, and take a vote.
Do it. Should we do a roll call vote?
Nope.
Do we do...
You just have one nomination.
So we have one nomination, Barbara Dan. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. At this point, we will transfer the gavel to Mr. Doug Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for helping me through that, everybody.
We've had a long time.
Yeah, right?
Okay, item five. Additions to the council meeting agenda. I think we've all, we're all familiar with that. Does anybody have any additions that they would like to bring up, to add to the agenda tonight? If not...
I have some things that I don't know if it falls under this, or if it falls at the very end where you have comments.
Okay.
Something that we probably wouldn't vote on or anything, but I want to bring it to the attention.
I think this is primarily for action items.
Okay.
Well, should it come in?
Should Mark Johnson's application be formally added, or not?
I don't think it's necessary. We're going to get to the ABCs. I think we're good.
Okay.
Any others? Okay, we'll move on then. Public comment. Come to the podium, name, address, three minutes. Anybody?
Yes, I'm Scott Mauger and live at 328 East Lamb Street, and I live with MS and walking is my daily physical therapy. I'd like the borough to remind Bellefonte homeowners, tenants, and landlords to clean their sidewalks within 24 hours after the winter storm ends. There is an ordinance for this under snow and ice removal. In walking, I'm finding many sidewalks weren't cleared from either of the last two winter storms, and I understand that Bishop Street residents have issues with PennDOT plowing snow onto their sidewalks, but unfortunately, PennDOT has nowhere else to put it. I know the frustration because I lived at 723 East Bishop Street for 20 years and dealt with it too. I've seen middle and high school students trying to navigate through the snow and ice heading to and from school, but Bishop Street isn't the only problem. There are many sidewalks throughout the borough that weren't taken care of, and I'm going to include the county because Center Crest sidewalks weren't cleared either, and I did see some students trying to navigate that. Yes, I could go to the mall and walk, which I have done on occasion, but I like the fresh air and challenge of the hills. And I'd also like to thank the borough and street crew for clearing the streets so quickly in the last winter storm. Both winter storms, they've done a good job. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Thanks.
Others?
We're doing not bother you today.
It's fine.
Scott, I would thank you. I agree 100% with you. If you see something, would you please shoot me an email at my mayor's account? I know I see the kids walking to school every morning as well, and that is something that should be done. So thank you for your concern, and I will gladly work with you and Mr. Brooks, and we'll get that taken care of as well as we can. So shoot me an email and let me know, and we'll talk. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Sure.
Okay, we're at communications. There are no written communications that I'm aware of. Anybody else have any? Okay. Consent agenda. And tonight, it's council meeting minutes of December 19th.
Hi, this is Joanne Tosti Basie. I'd like to remove the minutes from the consent so that we can make amendments.
So we'll move them. Okay. Is that the time now?
To make a statement?
Yeah, to get the input for the change in the...
Yes, might as well do it now.
Yeah, okay, Joanne.
Okay, I have several. Under the members present, both Shawna and I attended via Zoom, and that's usually noted, and it wasn't here. Under additions to the agenda, the last paragraph, it says there will be a special presentation. It should be added in executive session at the end of the meeting. That's on number four.
Joanne?
Yeah?
This Randy, that special presentation was the presentation we did for the mayor. That wasn't anything to do with executive session?
Oh, but the way the sentence read is rigged. It says there will be a special presentation at the end of the meeting to discuss evaluations, which is why I added in executive session. So if that's not what, if the special presentation, then it should to, if that wasn't what you were talking about, then it should say to eliminate to discuss evaluations. Whichever way it's supposed to go, that sentence is incorrect.
We can make that correction.
We'll make that correction, Joanne. But if you look under current, if you looked under... I know we added that to the agenda that evening, at the end of the meeting, and then the council, the code accounts, or the council meeting will adjourn. This is tonight's, this is tonight's agenda, so never mind what I'm talking about. But yeah, I think that was something I added.
That's fine, but the sentence, right, the way it reads, it sounds like the presentation was going to be about evaluation. So either eliminate the clause at the end or add executive session. I don't care which.
We'll do that.
Okay. Under number six, public comment, there should be a sentence added after the first sentence that says the proclamation was read during the work session when Senator Decorman was available, because it didn't actually occur at that point. Then, under number nine, the last paragraph, it said Tosti Basie expressed concern about requiring hard review. It shouldn't have been Johnson. And then add a sentence at the end that Tosti Basie suggested that Thompson should continue to send business signs to HARP for review when there's any question regarding appropriateness of a particular sign. Then, under 10, under current and old business, the first, second, third, fifth sentence, it's the motion where Dan motioned and Sedgwick second to approve Randy Backville delegate and Doug Johnson alternate delegate to the Spring Creek Watershed Commission. I put in parentheses, SCWC. And then Tosti Basie asked why this action is being discussed and not, and took out, and not later in the year and just saying, why isn't being done next year according to the same rules used to delay the appointment of the Bellefonte Borough Authority candidate in the previous item, which is still before the first meeting in the Spring Creek Watershed Commission in January. She motioned to table this item until after January 1st, and then the rest of the sentence remains the same. Then, under page five, where, let me see how many paragraphs there's that. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16. On the 17th paragraph in that section where it says Dan motioned and Bernier second to approve changes to the fee schedule for special events, the next to last sentence should remove Breckville and say Mr. Stewart clarified that the borough does not have enough funding. The next paragraph, it should say the motion was amended to keep the waivers, add in the parks for the nonprofits, and add the two names. That was Dan and McKean. In the last section under old, last paragraph under old business, it said Breckville should have, Mr. Stewart mentioned the comments for the short-term round of orders were due today, and he said are. So it's changing Breckville to Stewart. And then, under new business, I moved the catamemum, no council action required, down to paragraphs because that actually occurred after the CCNPO discussion. That's it. There's a lot on...
Any other changes? I think so, any changes before we're back into... Yeah, I would like to make a suggestion at this time, and that is... We have a motion. Okay. I didn't know if I could do it during the motion or after the motion. Okay. You want to call a question now? Did you have a second?
I'll second the motion to approve the minutes as amended.
All right. I thought you made the motion, so I was going to second.
Okay, I'll make the, yeah, whatever. It needs to be amended.
Did I hear a second over here?
I think Randy's second.
Oh, Randy, okay.
We both agree.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Minutes are approved with the changes. So I have a suggestion. To speed up this process of the minutes, I would like to ask the council members to submit these changes before noon on Thursday, the week of the meeting, and...
But we have to have the minutes before that.
That's right. And that's...
We'll go to work on that.
That's doable, Mr. Stewart said. Okay? And when we receive the corrected minutes, they will be marked in...
Like different color with the change.
Boulder or a different color, so that they're easily recognizable when you get your packet, and that may save us some time during this meeting. Is that... I'll make that motion. It's been made, the motion has been made by Mr. Breckville and seconded by Mr. Bernier. Any other questions?
Just to clarify, the deadline will be Thursday prior to the Monday meeting or Tuesday meeting.
Right, is that...
Yes.
Everybody good with that?
Will we all get a copy of that?
Yes.
Okay.
A discussion, we used to do that, and it worked really, really well, so I like the suggestion, Doug. If we could do that, it'll make it much easier. I don't really like doing this during the regular session. It'd just make it much easier. We all could do that.
Yep, great. I'll call for the vote. If there's no other questions, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same side. Motion carried. Okay. Consent agenda reports. Mr. Mayor, do you have a report tonight?
Yes, real brief. For my first mayor spotlight of 2023, I would like to spotlight Chief Weaver and the Bellefonte Police Department, and just thank them for being visible, being around, and always being around for people when they need help, and just what a great police department we have, and they work extremely hard. And over the holidays, you know, they spend a lot of hours away from their family and loved ones, and we thank you all for that, for your sacrifice for helping keep our community safe. So thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Officer Community Affairs, Gina.
Hi.
Hi.
I'll just try and make this brief because you guys have my memo in front of you. What I laid out here is just the reap appointments, which you'll do later on today, and there possibly some changes, but with, with these, none of these boards have been able to actually make recommendations because they haven't met since, you know, since these have come in, but I think it'll all be fine. I just wanted to note with the zoning hearing board that Josiah Newman was not reapplying, and I reached out to Mark Johnson, who had served on the zoning hearing board prior to 2021, and in fact, the only reason he didn't get reappointed was because of a mix-up and not having the right contact information for him. So because of that, I reached out to him and said, are you still interested? Would you like we have this opening? And the reason why you have this in front of you is because he just came about 3 o'clock today to hand that in to me. So he did get in his volunteer application, and I know that our chairman currently of the zoning hearing board and the other members would love to have Mark Johnson back on the board, so I just wanted to mention that.
Gina, just for clarification, is there something at the table that I haven't received?
It's just Mark Johnson's volunteer application for the zoning hearing board opening.
Okay.
And then...
Thank you.
You're welcome. And then I know that Jenny Lynn... And then I know that Jenny Lynn Schuster had already sent you the communication that I included in my memo, but I did it so that you could see it a second time, and there is some information there for you on active transportation projects, and then also a couple of objective articles on short-term rentals, so. Any questions for me? Is the, is the appointments, are they, is that clear? Because I know that's a little confusing.
Yep.
Okay, cool, all right.
When do you expect to meet with this transportation group again?
Uh, we, there, uh, I don't know. In fact, probably at the end of January, but there's no official date set up, so I can, you know.
Can you add me to that list, please?
Sure, yeah, yeah.
Thanks.
Mm-hmm, all right, cool, thanks.
Thanks, Gina.
Yep.
The mayor, he did his report.
Yeah, please, yeah, we thank the police.
Okay, we're moving on to number 10 then, current and old business. The first item on old business is Bellefonte Borough Fee Schedule, amended. I need a motion and a second to approve the 2023 Bellefonte Borough Fee Schedule. You, I think you all should have taken a look at it in your packet. Does anybody have any questions? And I'm looking for a motion.
I'll make that motion. Dan?
Barbara's made a motion, is there a second?
I'll second, no.
Oh, Rita, thank you.
Yeah.
Motion and second, discussion?
Um, I have a question about the water and sewer.
Okay.
Charges, there is a new line item under water and sewer, added for 2023, and it just says, "other," "other sources."
I saw that today, I'm not sure if that is a typo or what.
Um, no, it says, "Other sources $144," underwater and sewer.
I, I don't know what that is.
It's on page three.
Yeah, I saw it earlier today. I didn't get a chance to check with Lori.
Looks like a great source of revenue.
Not the quarter. Wasn't it 624?
It just says other.
It just says other sources.
Other sources.
Could, could we amend the motion to exclude that acceptance and have that reviewed and come back next time?
Yes.
Sure.
So I'll make that motion.
Second, thank you, Randy. So we're going to pull out that one part, but approve the rest of the fee schedule. So those wishing to approve the amendment, we'll vote on that right now to pull it out, and then we'll vote on the fee schedule for the remainder of the piece. So those in favor of the amended motion to pull out that one item, say yes. Yes, now.
Aye.
Aye.
Same sign, if you don't want to do it. Now, the next motion is to vote on the fee schedule as it is listed without that item in there.
I'll make that motion. McKee?
A second, Dan?
No discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Motion carried unanimously. Okay. Next item, Bellefonte Borough Authority, approved a recommendation to council to appoint Doug Johnson to the authority. I need a motion and a second for Doug Johnson to be reappointed to the Bellefonte Borough Authority.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second, McKee.
There's been a motion made and seconded. Comments?
Dan and McKee.
Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Same sign, motion carried unanimously. Okay, now we're to the ABC appointments. Let's get that with, yeah.
Yes, one second. Get it right here. Here. Doug Johnson was done.
The authority is completed.
Yes.
Do you all have this list available to you?
Yep.
Okay. Civil Service Commission is the first one.
So I think we're going to hold on that.
Yes.
We, we don't have any applicants, but I guess there's a couple that are maybe coming in. We have 30 days to fill the vacancy. Mr. Torso has decided not to renew, so we're, we're going to hold that maybe possibly to the next meeting.
Yes. So next meeting, we hope to have the applicant.
Yes.
All right, hard five-year term, we have.
I was, do you want, forget it, I'll hold off.
Okay. The hard five-year term appointment, we have one applicant who is interested in serving again, Patricia Long, and we have another applicant, Amy Kircheff.
Kelschner.
Kelschner. And I think Chris Morelli, I think are the three. Did I miss one?
Not, not, not quite. Gay Dunn and Pat Long are currently on, and Harv recommended that they be reappointed. Amy Kelschner and Chris Morelli are looking for this second alternate.
Alternate, yes. So we only have one, then to, okay.
There are two alternates seats.
Yes. Okay.
Chris Morelli has extended it by email, or has stated that he's interested in serving on the Planning Commission, which he used to serve on as well.
So I need, do we want to go through these one at a time?
So, so I, if, if Chris Morelli is willing to move over to the Planning Commission, I'll make a one, three-person motion.
Good.
For Amy Kelschner, Gay Dunn, and Pat Long. Pat Long has a regular and Gay as the two, and Amy as the two alternates.
I need a second. Mr. Bernier, seconded, discussion. Okay, all the, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. So we have Pat Long, Gay Dunn, Amy Kircheff, right? Kelch.
Kelschner.
Kelschner, very good.
Amy Kay.
Uh, next, Planning Commission, we can do these at the same time, too. Mark Edwards would like to be reappointed, and I think Chris Morelli would like to be appointed.
That's correct.
And John Eaton has put in an application as well.
Okay, okay. Well, I need it, I need, I'll make a motion for Chris Morelli and.
And I.
For, for planning, Mark Edwards. Are you doing a motion?
And I, and I'll do a motion for John Eaton.
Why don't you just do Mark Edwards first? I'm sorry.
Hey, hang on a second. Brandy made a motion.
So I'll make, I'll do a three-person one, too, and Mark Edwards for planning, Chris Morelli for planning.
I'll second that motion.
Okay.
And then, and then I'm making the motion for John Eaton.
Hold on, there's, is there a motion on the floor?
There's a motion on the floor right now, Joanne, to vote.
Oh, wait a minute, as I understood from nominations, you put all of them in, and then you vote for them one at a time.
As they're nominated.
That's what I'm doing.
As they're nominated.
As they're nominated.
Yes, okay.
And so this would be the third nomination. John would not be voted upon until after the other two are voting.
Okay.
That's all. It's just making sure they're, all the names are in the pot.
Was there a second to your motion?
You don't need a, for nominations, you don't need a second.
All right. So those in favor of Mark Edwards and Chris Morelli to be appointed to the Planning Commission, say, wait, wait, wait.
Point of order, point of order, you need to do them one at a time.
I thought we could do them both, because.
Well, there wasn't any conflict on the previous.
Oh, okay.
This one has some, somebody's going to lose that.
All those in favor of Mark Edwards to be reappointed to the Planning Commissions, please say aye.
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 Aye. All those in favor of Chris Morelli being appointed to the Planning Commission, say aye.
Aye.
No.
Okay. Do we need to?
I hear, I hear one nay, is that correct?
That's what I heard, I guess. The motion carries then, those are the two appointees.
Correct.
Okay. Next one. Bellefonte Area Industrial Development Authority, it's a five-year term. Greg Went has said that he would like to be reappointed, so I'm looking for a motion to reappoint.
So I'm.
Second?
So I'm, I'll second.
Thank you. Moved and seconded, discussion for Greg Went's appointment.
Question, do we have the application?
Uh, we have an old one on file.
Yeah, did you get anything from Greg Went?
I got a verbal, just a verbal.
Okay, we, we can follow up with the paper.
Ken, discussion on that, what I was going to suggest, because there's a couple others just like that, is that we could conditionally approve, they just need to get an updated application.
Sure. Very good, yes. All in favor of Greg Went's appointment, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Greg Went's in. Zoning Hearing Board, you just at the table tonight, received an application from Mark Johnson, and Joshua Newman is not interested in be, in reapplying, so I'm looking for a motion to appoint Mark Johnson to the zoning hearing board.
I'll make that motion, Brackville.
Second, Cedric.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any comments or questions on this appointment? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carried. Okay, Center County Library Board, we had one applicant, Jay Bryce Taylor, for the Center County Library Board, four-year term. I'd like a motion to appoint Jay Bryce Taylor to the Center County Library Board.
Make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second it, Clayton.
Thank you. Any questions on the motion to appoint Mr. Taylor?
I just.
This is just a comment, I looked at the requirements for that particular position, and that particular appointment does not require the person to be a resident of Bellefonte. He is a business owner.
Correct.
So we're perfectly fine having him there.
Right. Yes, Deborah?
Um, I think I emailed Ralph today, the bylaws for this organization have two, three, have a three-year term with a two-term limit, and this is, indicates a four-year term.
Okay, well, thank you, we'll make that correction.
We'll, we'll correct that.
So you can serve for six years, but it's two, three-year terms.
We'll make sure that he's aware of that.
Okay, thank you.
All those in favor of the appointment of Jay Bryce Taylor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Motion carried unanimously. Did I miss any, Ralph?
I believe that's all.
Just, just one, but it wasn't on the list.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
When I was looking over the ABC list this afternoon.
Yep.
There was a statement at the very end of the ABCs that says, "The citizen vacancy board member is appointed by council at the first meeting of each calendar year and serves as the board chair." It is not on the agenda, so I'm recommending that we do this at the next meeting, so that we can put it out to see if there's anybody interested in that.
Yes.
I agree, and we'll do that at the same time we do the Civil Service Commission appointment. Okay?
Okay.
All right. Moving on, short-term rental ordinance draft, council should consider comments received and determine any next stepped, steps, further consideration amendments, solicitor review of any proposed changes, et cetera. So I'm looking for some discussion. I think we have some.
I'd like to make a motion for the short-term rental ordinance draft. There was a lot of information that came, came through by the 19th, and we didn't get it in our packets here until, I guess, Friday. So there's, there's a lot of information there, so what I'm, what I'd like to do is make a motion to hold a special meeting to review the comments, look at what we, during that meeting, we look at what needs to be changed, if anything needs to be changed, and then we get back to the solicitor after that. We just need to pick a, a meeting night, but that could be.
I need a second to your motion.
A second.
Okay. Now the discussion, Randy.
So I can put a date to it, because I'd like to, Ralph, go on to take a look at your schedules and see what we can do, get as many, you know, if we can't have a quorum, let's, we need at least a quorum. So if other people can't make it, that's fine, but it's something that, you know, if we can get it done before the next meeting, then we could, that would give us time to send it to the solicitor and have it back for the second meeting in January.
Okay. So you, you don't think we could do that in a work session and then have the vote after the work session?
I think there's just too much there that's going to be discussed.
I agree with Miami.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So are you going to doodle something, or?
Probably.
We want to talk about it tonight?
Well, you're saying before the next meeting, so that only really leaves next week sometime.
Yeah.
So, and we need 24 hours' notice advertised for a special meeting.
I'd like to get the date settled tonight, if we could, instead of doodling everybody. Does anybody have an objection to that? Sorry, I don't know.
Do we want to do that after this meeting, or do we want to do it now?
What's that?
To figure out if we can find a date.
I'd like to do it right now, get it over with. Does anybody have dates that are good for them?
Are you?
Can we start somewhere?
Well, next, you're looking at it next week, so, and normally, if there is a Planning Commission meeting, they meet Mondays.
There won't be a Planning Commission on Monday.
So next Monday, we'll probably be available.
So we have, next week is January 9th through the 13th.
So the 9th and 10th work for me.
I'm good for the 9th.
I can't do the 9th.
Tuesday, the 10th is probably.
Tuesday, the 10th, would that work?
I can do either.
Yes.
Yes.
Is there an authority meeting that night?
No, it's tomorrow.
That's tomorrow. That'll be good.
Barbara?
I'm, I'm good on the 10th, thank you.
Ken? Gina?
Is that public?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah.
Okay, so we've decided on January 10th, what time?
Is it 2:00 or are we going to do it at 6:00?
No, no. Should be 4:00.
Ken?
10:00.
Can you make 6:00?
6:00.
Gina?
Good.
Okay. Do we need to make a motion to do this?
So I'm out.
Brackville already made the motion, and Cedric seconded it.
Yeah, okay. At 10.
Oh, okay.
January 10th at 6:00 PM in council chambers.
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously. All right, have your questions and corrections and recommendations ready for that meeting, so we can speed through that as quickly as possible. If you don't have any notes, we don't want you to sit here fiddling around your paperwork like I do, trying to figure out what you want to ask. So let's come prepared for that meeting, if we can. Next one. Council meeting scheduled for 2023, the June 5th council meeting conflicts with the Borough Association Annual Conference in Hershey on June 4th through the 7th. We'd like to change that date of that meeting to Wednesday, June 7th. CNET can cover our meeting on the 7th, if council approves moving it from the 5th to the 7th. I'd like a motion to change the council meeting from June 5th to June 7th, at the same starting time of 7:30 PM.
I'll make that motion with the addition of the work session.
Sure.
Okay.
I'll second that, Clayton.
Second, Deborah. Hearing none, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carried unanimously. New business. Consider items from the goals, issues list to be scheduled for January 17th at a council work session. Call for a motion and a second of goals to consider for January 17th work session. Thank you. Is there a second?
A second. A second.
McKee and Dan.
Any, yes, Joanne, any corrections?
What is it exactly, was this a motion? Did you say put something on the work gen? Or is it something specific? I couldn't hear.
A call for a motion and a second of goals to consider for the January 17th, 23, 2023 work session. So goals to consider for 2023.
So, so what? So does, does this motion just say that we're going to discuss all of the work sessions for the year? Or is it saying that if we pass this motion, then we can select something without having a, for the next meeting? That's, that's where I'm confused.
I think, Joanne, I think what she's looking for is, what goals do you want to, what topics do we want on the work session for the 117? That's what we're looking for. Just for a little bit more clarity, I think, you know, the, the goals all come from everybody, and, you know, they, if somebody submits it, it went on the list. And then we can pick from the list as to what we want to work on, so there, so.
I think what Randy's saying is we want your list of goals that you would hope to accomplish for 2023 from each council member.
We did put in, we did put in the 2023 goals that were in the budget document in this, in this materials packet, and we can move that list to the next work session as well as look for your comments or take comments and discuss additional goals at that meeting.
So, so, so try to clarify what's going on. So what you're saying is that the next work session will look over whatever the goals are, mutually created list, and then from that, we'll start working on the goals. Not that we're going to work on a specific goal.
Right, that's correct. That's, that's.
Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, that's fine. So what, do we have a, a, we did have a motion and a second, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Then what I would like to ask as part of the discussion is could you go over the goals list that was presented this evening and remove anything that has been completed so that we actually have a good 2023 working document, including adding the things you were just mentioning? It'll make it much easier for us to look at. So, for example, there's stuff that we ended, like their EV charging things were fixed, so we don't need to have that one on this year. There's a thing about the Spring Creek Watershed Commission, one water plant that doesn't need to be there. Those kinds of things can be eliminated.
So basically, the things that we've completed in 2022, take them off and start.
Right, just, just so we have a clean document we can start working from.
And some of that stuff is, like in yellow, I believe, is already, already scheduled for '23.
Yeah.
There's some things that are already scheduled for '23 from last year.
Yes, we'll take out the things that are completed, leave the things on that are in progress.
Is that okay, Joanne?
That would be perfect, thank you.
Okay, good. Let's move on. Where'd my agenda go? Okay, this is a new item on the agenda. Uh, council member comments for the good of the order. Meaning, we just sort of go around the table. This is for council members only. During the, the meeting, you had some thoughts throughout the meeting that you would like to bring up. Keep it under three minutes. If you have nothing, say, "I don't have anything, but thanks for asking." Rita, I'm going to start with you, if you don't mind.
Okay.
Um, I would just like to give a shout out to the folks that watch our Borough Council meetings. My, my brother-in-law is what kind of spurred this comment. He is a loyal watcher, and I'd like to say a shout out to Rodney Lee because he watches every, every meeting and always tells me about what's going on. And he also watches the, the county commissioner meetings, too, which I think is commendable, too. So ought to be more folks out there watching and knowing what's going on.
Will you tell Rodney? I remember when he had his Honda motorcycle.
Oh, he'll hear.
At the Fargo gas station doing burnouts.
Uh-huh.
Tell Rodney I said hi.
We'll do. And you basically just did, too, so he'll be watching.
Deborah?
Uh, nothing this evening.
Randy?
Yeah, we are still have an opening in our Civil Service Commission, and we're still looking for people to sign in and send an application in. You can just call the Borough at 814-355-1891.
1-501. That's it? Mayor?
Nothing.
Don?
I didn't think you were going to ask.
Doesn't matter.
Is that what you said?
Ah, yeah, okay. Council and Borough staff. Nothing?
I have nothing, Doc.
I'm good. Barbara?
I have nothing, thank you.
Uh, nothing this week.
Sean?
I'd like to draw attention to the fire, the home fire that took place this past week and the fact that we had two dead fire hydrants. I don't know what that means exactly, but a lot of the damage could have been controlled.
They, basically, they weren't dead. They were, they had two pumper trucks hooked up to the same water line, pulling, pulling the water out of the line. So physically, that's not going to work. So there needs to be an educational process of where to hook up in event of a fire. You can't have two pumper trucks pulling water off the same small water line, water main. So that's what happened. They basically starved the water pipe, the water main, preventing water to be pumped, so.
Yeah, that was reported as dead in the newspaper.
I understand. It's unfortunate that that's how it was conveyed, but simply, you just can't have that much pumping power on one water main. It's just not going to work.
Okay, I'm glad that's clarified for the public, too.
Thank you very much.
On that column, who, who was responsible for checking those hydrants?
Well, it wasn't a problem with the hydrants as, as two, two trucks or more than one truck hooked up to pumping out of that line. Now, Matt Alman, explained, our Public Works Director, explained to this, this to me today, and he wants to talk to the chief. Now, the chief has his phone number. You know, Matt did not get a phone call. Typically, when there's a large fire, the chief will call the Public Works Director, Matt Alman, and then just talk about where to hook up or what's going on with the water system. It was not a problem with the hydrants. It's just they sucked the water out of the pipe, the main pipe feeding that system for that section of town. So we want to work on, you know, we talked about today, communications, but there needs to be more communication, maybe some education with the firefighters on where to hook up and how to prevent that from happening.
Okay, I thought there was also testing to be done pressure-wise in terms of how much pressure's in a line. I don't know who does that.
There, there's adequate pressure in the line, but you can't have two of these modern pumper trucks.
It doesn't have the capacity.
Yes, it's not, not easy.
We need a trivia question. You can't leave tonight because I overlooked it, and I apologize.
Does Rodney look forward to the trivia questions?
I'll have to ask him. He didn't mention that.
He never mentioned it?
Of course, everyone knows that there are 67 counties in PA. Relative population of our 67 counties, where does Center County fall on that list? First being Philadelphia, over a million residents, 1.5. 67th being Cameron County with only 45. Joanne, let me get the question.
Forest County, Forest County has the smallest town, doesn't it not?
Cameron County has 4,500 people in it. Where does Center County fall? Interesting, I thought, when I found this term.
What a Penn State. What a Penn State.
Todd's ruining that. First Joanne, and now Penn State. Where do they fall on the list? 2021. 23 is an excellent guess.
Is that correct?
Well, she, no. 22nd. It's 22nd most populated county in, in Pennsylvania.
Nice. If this was Price's right, you know, Joanne, you would have won that.
Maybe we should start having prizes, then. Yeah.
I thought about that.
Anything else?
Sacks or something.
Doug, did you go around the room to everybody?
Yeah, I don't.
You, it's your turn. It's your turn now.
Okay, great.
You didn't raise your hand.
Just one real quickie. Uh, the Environmental Advisory Board is starting off the new year with a meeting tomorrow morning. And we had canceled the meeting in middle of December because of the holidays. So the agenda tomorrow is what we were supposed to have done in December, which is having Julie look over, show us the online survey.
So I, I thought of a question, and you don't have to answer it tonight. The people that get the survey, how do they know? Do they read the Climate Action Plan before they complete the survey?
That's up to them. That it's mentioned in the beginning of the survey.
So I'm wondering if they're shooting in the dark sometimes when they're answering these questions.
Yeah, that's, that has to be, that, that's up to them as to how, how they want to do it. Because the very first paragraph mentions the Climate Action Plan with a link to the plan.
Okay. Is that it? Anything else? I have one thing to say. I, I really appreciate the confidence that this council has instilled in me for this term. I hope I can lead up or stand up to what your expectations are of me, and contact me anytime with any questions that you have. And I'm really looking forward to, to getting some stuff done for our Borough residents in 2023. And I think we have a fine executive team of Mr. Bernier and Ms. Dan and myself and with the Borough staff. I think we'll get a lot accomplished this year. We don't want to get stalled out in paperwork, dotting i's and crossing t's. So I really appreciate the confidence that you've given me at this point. That's all. Thank you. So I need an adjournment motion.
I'll make that motion. Dan?
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Meeting's adjourned. Dan?